Hey, hey, what's going on? Thanks for tuning back into the way too much J M C podcast here. This is two days in a row. I'm on a, I'm on a, I'm on a roll here. Coming to speak to you today because we just found out about 30 minutes ago that Jeff County Public School System here in Louisville, Kentucky has, in addition to canceling Thursday and Friday's school days, the second, third day of school, now the fourth, fifth and six days of school have been canceled as well. And that is at a, at a bare minimum. So I feel like there was some things I wanted to talk about today. First of all, I want to make this clear. There is, I do not see any possible way or any like chance that they actually ended up back in school on Thursday next week. I say that for several reasons. First of all, they supposedly spent, I mean, they, they hired this new logistics company in like November of last year. So they've been theoretically, I mean, worked on this thing for nine months. Okay. And implementing this, uh, this new system. So how are they going to rectify that in five days? If they couldn't, if the, if the plan they just built took them nine months and was an absolute dumpster fire. So that's number one. Number two, we know there's been, if even if the lower number is true, a significant number of bus drivers that have said, peace out. We done, son. I've heard numbers as low as 17 or 18, but I've heard as many as 85 or 90. You know, you know, we don't know how much, again, the establishment doesn't, whether it be Republican or Democrat or whatever. They don't feel the need to be transparent with us as individuals. So the people that are out there saying, don't be spreading false rumors and all that stuff. Listen, they could squelch all rumors by just releasing the number. How many is it? They don't want crazy conspiracy theories like me to, uh, to go off down rabbit holes, then just tell me what the damn number is. Okay. So that's, that's number two. Number three, all they've been doing the last two days is practicing the same bus routes they have. And so some people are saying they were changing routes, you know, all that kind of stuff. Bus drivers have went on record and came forth with their names, not anonymously, saying that all they've been doing the last two days is driving the same damn route they drove on Wednesday. And that once again, they're driving them in times that aren't indicative of what traffic will be like come, you know, school start times and dismissal times, which are, which typically happen around rush hour, whether it be going to work or lunchtime or getting off of work. So with all those factors in mind, I don't see any possible way on God's green earth, they end up back in school on Thursday. So we're going to have to figure out something, figure something else out. You know, like I said, luckily for me, you know, we do, we already homeschool our three, our three, uh, school age children. And once our fourth is ready to go into kindergarten, he will, he will be as well. But I think it's time that we call upon our homeschool community, call upon our church communities, all that to say, hey, listen, it's time to step up. You know, like they say, don't ever let a crisis go to waste. Well, I think that holds true here. And like if we, if we want families to take alternative routes, there's never been a better time than right now to convince them to, hey, come join my homeschool community, my homeschool pod, come check out our, our church, uh, based school, you know, whatever. Let's just, let's just put, put our arms around the pub school community and try to help them out. You know what I mean? The second thing I want to kind of address here. This is what the rest of the show is going to be about is if they weren't spending the last month preparing for this whole busing debacle and like trying to make sure they've crossed every T dotted, every I asked every question. Like been ready to rock and roll, cocked and locked for day one. Then what in the hell was James Craig, Linda Duncan, Corey Scholl, Sarah McIntosh, Joe Marshall, Chris Colb, and Diane Porter, Diane Porter. What were they doing during their meetings? What were they talking about? Well, you know what they've been talking about? They've been talking about whether or not they were going to vote to follow the law of a duly elected state legislature or not. And whether or not they thought it was right or wrong to let little boys use girls bathrooms. And before you start thinking, I'm just using, I'm just being hyperbolic and trying to fear monger and all that. I'm going to prove it to you. So they've had two, they've had two school board meetings, one on July 25th, one on August 7th. Okay. One was a regular, regularly scheduled board meeting. The other one was a special called board meeting. Both were several out, were several hours long. And both for the most part, I'd say 90% were fully devoted to discussing Senate Bill 150 that was just passed in Kentucky Legislature sponsored by Senator Maxwell Wise, Senator Wise. Thank you for the retweet yesterday on yesterday's show and all that. Appreciate the love, brother. And what Senate Bill 150 did roughly required districts to either eliminate instruction on human sexuality or STDs in grades one through five, or prohibit instruction with the goal of purpose of studying sexual orientation or gender identity. It says or there, it was meant for it to be both. So they've spent the last two board meetings figuring out how to skirt the law and how to like act like they just been playing gotcha politics. Senate Bill 150 prohibits a student from using a restroom reserved for students of a different biological sex. With written consent of a parent or guardian requires a school to provide the best available restroom accommodation for a transgender student, providing access to single stall rest, single stall restroom or controlled use faculty restroom. It requires parent notification and consent regarding provision or referral of health or mental health services relating to human sexuality. I hate that they don't, they made it specific to human sexuality. They should have to notify parents and get consent for the referral of any health or mental health service. I think that's bullshit. Uh, they'd get consent regarding curriculum instruction relating to human sexuality and student completion of a wellbeing survey or health screening for research purposes. It also requires procedures for employees to encourage and facilitate discussion between a student and a parent guardian regarding physical and mental health. So that, that's what they've been debating on is how to skirt that. And in addition to that, SP 150 also banned like transgender cert, like surgeries and hormone therapies and puberty blockers, that kind of thing, um, for transgender youth. So it kind of packaged all that together, but this is the specific parts that they're trying to skirt here. So they have spent, I would say in the last two board meetings, I think there was about, you know, let's say seven, seven or eight hours of minutes posted in video on YouTube. But it's safe to say that six and a half to seven hours of that was spent discussing whether or not they were going to vote to approve them following the state law. Well, first of all, ain't no damn body elected you to do that. What they elected you to do was make sure their damn kids got on a bus and got the school safe and got home safe. They didn't elect you to be a state representative or a senator or a city councilman or the county clerk or the damn, or the constable for that matter. They didn't elect you to be any of those things. Elect you to be a school board member and to follow the law and implement the policies that the state and local governments, the people that they elect to make laws and create regulations to follow those, to follow those, what they put into place. So instead of making sure that kids weren't put on a bus and sent to BFE or left on their little 938 to piss all over themselves. I mean, there's been, there's been reports of kids just basically telling parents, I will absolutely never get on a bus the rest of my life. There was a video in the news the other day of like one kid running off the bus and like, like she was crying, sobbing for her father. Now her other two older, a little bit older siblings were just kind of goofing around and they were just excited to be home. But the youngest one, again, just like with COVID, I mean, they don't, this board doesn't understand what they did to our youth during COVID with the masking and all that, all the scare tactics and mass hysteria. We'll never really know the ramifications, the mental health ramifications and all that, because it's like kids can't know what they don't know. You know what I mean? And so, you know, like that's the main thing I want to point out here. So on 725, they were doing this. That day they voted that they didn't know what they wanted to do and they wanted to table it. Well, they wanted to push it out until after, until after the Supreme Court decided on this Title IX from a federal level stuff. But the state law says they have to implement it by August 15th. So I think they were literally trying to decide whether or not they were going to blatantly go against state law or if they're just going to try to skirt it. Well, they went with the latter. And so they voted on something prior, you know, prior to that 815 deadline. And that's what they've spent 90% of their last two board meetings discussing were the things we're about to talk about today. And the whole time we're talking about it, I don't, this isn't even about these, these policies and what your opinion on the, on these policies. What I'm trying to get across is they've been talking about this stuff instead of talking about what one of the biggest aspects of what a school board is actually mandated to do, which is provide safe transportation and provide for the safety of students when they're not in their parents' care. So 725, they had a meeting, decide to table it, 87, August 7th, called a special meeting. Another several hours meeting that was fully devoted to, to this. Okay. And what they talked about was it was like recommendation to receive report regarding board policies to implement Senate Bill 150 to adopt version three of related board policies for first reading to weigh the sake reading and to receive for review of related administrative procedures. So let's just give you a little background. On March 29th, 2023, Senate Bill 150 became a law. Sessions one through three pertain to public schools. And the board is required to adopt policies to implement provisions of the bill. Several key aspects of the bill pertaining to the treatment of transgender students raised significant concerns for the district. Specifically, the district is concerned that SB 150 targets transgender students because of their non-conforming gender identity and may therefore be discriminatory on the basis of sex, may create barriers to access to equal educational opportunity, may limit the rights of parents, guardians, and may endanger the health, safety and lives of hundreds of children in district schools. On July 25th, we received two versions of the policy and administrative procedures which have been reviewed and discussed by the Board Policy Committee meeting on July 10th, 2023. The board did not adopt either version. So July 10th, July 25th, August 7th, all devoted towards deciding whether or not they were going to follow the law or not. If they just followed the law, these last three sessions, last three meetings they've had, could have been fully devoted on holding whoever this company was that did these rerouting things were like accountable. And maybe, uh, requiring some of their representatives or requiring the bus, bus driver superintendent or pulling in actual bus drivers and asking them questions about their routes and how things were going and maybe even getting them out there earlier than three days before school started to practice their, but no, they didn't do any of that shit. All they talked, all they talked about was this. So at tonight's meeting, the board will hear a presentation regarding a version three of the policies and administrative procedures, version three. Version three is the same as version one with two critical differences. Number one, it establishes that a gender dysphoria. Pull it up for you so you can see it up here. It establishes that gender dysphoria can be a disability and man title student to accommodations under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act or Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. Such accommodations may include permitting access and use. Notice what they say here. I'm gonna highlight on the screen. And use of a certain bathroom. You know why they use that word? Because they think under the regulations of 504 IDEA, American Disability Act, all that, that they can in fact allow gender dysphoric youth to use whatever, whatever help bathroom they want. And there's nothing that the state legislature can do about it. That's what they think. But realize how disingenuous they are because they know that if you read that in those terms, you're going to get pissed. They say a certain restroom. It's telling. Number two, it clarifies that the intentional repeated and ongoing misgendering of a student, including but not limited to the use of non-preferred pronouns of a student, may constitute a violation of the professional code of ethics for Kentucky certified personnel, adding a provision that such conduct, so they added, they added this provision. This wasn't in there before, that such conduct shall be reported to the Educational Professional Standards Board. So they added the provision that if you as a teacher continue to misgender, misgender a student, they're, not that they can't, they're going to report you to the Kentucky Educational Professional Ethics Board. That will then in turn, report you to the Department of Education, the Federal Department of Education for sexual harassment, bullying, uh, investigations. Now, why is that important? You say, well, because I've learned a couple of things in my last two years of, uh, being involved in state politics in general. The right, us as conservatives, Republicans, conservatives, you know, whatever get labeled as the people that are using kids and teachers as political footballs. Not once have I ever draft, helped, helped draft legislation. Have I proposed legislation? Have I lobbied for legislation? That specifically goes after a teacher or a student and tries to criminalize them or put them in the path of this us versus them political culture warfare. Not once. It was Kentucky Department of Education, the Federal Department of Education that made teachers the mask police. It was the Department of Education's that were scaring children to death about going to school without having a mask on and getting a vaccine that they have no reason to get. Statistically, zero percent chance of dying from a disease. And now it will be the Department of Education, federal and the state Kentucky Department of Education that is telling teachers, if you follow the law, we are, we not, not that you, we might, we are going to report you to the Kentucky Department, Kentucky Professional Educational Professional Ethics Board. And they are going in turn, report you to the feds. So they're basically saying like, choose who you think is like more likely to fall through on the litigation and the retaliation. And I think any smart teacher is going to know the only side that has no empathy and gives zero dams about any one individual's health and welfare is the, is the Democratic Party and the leftist institutions, alphabet institutions. They don't give a damn about any individual. They wholeheartedly believe in protecting the, the most people they can, even if it means literally ending the life or ruining the livelihood, the means of earning a livelihood. Even if it means that, that doesn't matter if it may, if it's, if it's better for the, for their cause. They play the long game, man. So I'll tell you, I'm, I'm telling you right now, if the state, if our state legislature doesn't button up some of the language in this next session and doesn't make it clear like, hey, we're going to call your damn bluff. Like we're going to do what we say we're going to do. Then teachers are going to all have to pick a side and they're going to choose to withhold stuff from parents and things like, and let, because again, like the blowback from the left is so extreme that they like, I get it. I totally understand. So all right. So what is this version three? And what are the, what are the explicit things discussed in it? And this, y'all know me, this is my, this is what I love doing. I love digging into the details. So if you don't want, if you don't want details, then maybe go ahead and click off the show. You know, maybe we're going to dig into this a little bit. I promise I'll, I'll get through it quick. All right. So this, this policy version three. And again, remember this policy version three, which is also what the focus of the last three board meetings dated back to at least the beginning of July. So theoretically, these, these seven people haven't spent a damn second talking about anything else. Cause they ain't like it's their full, it's their full-time job. They got day jobs. They don't get paid a dime. So all the mental capital they've, they've spent and they've devoted to discussing the educational needs of Louisville's students has been solely, pretty much solely devoted to this. So first thing they say is the board believes that the Senate Bill 150, which targets, which targets transgender students simply because their non-conforming gender identity is discriminatory, may create barriers to access to equal educational opportunity, may limit the rights of parents, guardians, and may endanger the health, safety and lives of hundreds of children in district schools. That is about as ironic as it can get. You sons of bitches endangered 96,000, actually I guess 56,000 bus riding kids on Wednesday. I mean, you all exposed them to like imminent F and harm imminent. I mean, it was only by the grace of God that there were no children abducted, knowingly abducted, knowingly lost, hit by vehicles. I mean, only Jesus Christ himself intervening can, can explain how none of that happened. Other than it did happen and the PR people got to him quicker and wrote, and wrote, wrote him a check. That's, that's the only other option. Let's keep going. By forbidding the board to adopt a policy to prohibit the intentional, repeated and ongoing misgendering of students, Senate Bill 150 nullifies the rights of trans-affirming parents, guardians to make personal decisions impacting the education of their children and may create barriers to transgender students having equal access to educational opportunities and activities. It doesn't nullify the rights of those parent guardians. Y'all can homeschool your damn kids the same way I do. The legislation creates uncertainty regarding the degree to which the confidentiality of students must be protected by employees, possibly creating dangerous, potentially life-threatening situations for some students. So they think these kids most life-threatening situations they're in are what could be in is if their parents find out they were depressed and needed to go to a therapist or needed to be talked to, loved on a little bit. Not that the scary situation for them would be to put a six-year-old or seven-year-old on a damn bus for like four and a half hours. They don't piss all over themselves, sitting by a high school where it might bully the shit out of them for the next five years of their lives. That isn't scary. They're so worried about the fact that, or the possibility that a parent would find out that they need to help their kid. Okay. That they, they've totally neglected even thinking about the busing situation, which is ridiculous. They just don't want to have to tell parents anything. A school-based decision-making school policy on physical privacy and safety of students. Schools based decision-making council or advisory leadership team shall adopt a policy that okay, at a minimum does not allow students to use restrooms, locker rooms or shower rooms that are reserved for students of a different biological sex. Listen to this though. Again, listen guys, every little word, every vocabulary word that's used in a formal, uh, formal policy like this or in, or in legislation, all of them matter. A student's biological sex shall be recorded in the district's student data system as reported by the student's parent, parent or guardian. That's a very key provision. Because one thing I was trying to make sure that they did and that was in every bill that I helped draft was that we made it, we wanted to make it a formal requirement. Okay. That you either had to turn in a birth certificate or you had to turn in a notarized formal legal affidavit. Affidavit that said, my child, my child's sex is this. And if I'm lying, it's you know, it's, it's like punishable to the full extent of the law or whatever, for, for lying, for lying to the system. So in other words, if I say my son is a girl, he ends up using girls' restrooms and he sexually assaults a little, a little girl. Not only would that child have been legally responsible, the parents would have been legally responsible because they would have lied on a formal legal document as to the biological sex of their child. And even, listen, even our Republican legislature wouldn't do it. And I will say this, a lot of it's because they don't want to get in the trenches. And y'all know, I know a lot of them. You know, and like, y'all know, me and Jason Neames are close, me and Max Wise are close, me and Lindsey Tishner are close, Josh Callaway, Shane Baker, Josh Bray, Adam Ball, I mean, like Kevin Brad, I mean, Stephen Don, Steve, like Rawlings, Marion Park. I mean, I know them all, guys. Anybody with any kind of like traditional conservative bent, I have a relationship with them. And even like most, most of the people in leadership have some kind of relationship with them. They know who I am. And they know what I was doing. The people, the powers that be had no interest in listening to, to like the, the minute details of why all these little words matter. They just think that you're going over the top and being a conspiracy theorist. And then the left just does exactly what we knew they were going to do. So, uh, shout out to policy that provides written consent to school officials with the best available accommodation, but that accommodation shall not include the use of school restrooms, locker rooms or shower rooms designated for use by students of a different biological sex while students of a different biological sex are present or could be present. Okay. So that's again, that sounds, that, that's exactly what we wanted, right? That's, that mean, that's what, that's what I wanted. Cause again, like if you're having a basketball game in a gym and you have two boys teams, normally the other, the way, the way boys team is going to be in the girls' locker, the girls' restroom or locker room, whatever, right? The problem with this is the way they have set the standard, the legislature, mind you, has set the standard on how biological sexes are reported. All Jeff County will have to do now is put in fine print, you can, you can turn in a birth certificate. But I can get to you right now, what they're going to start, what they're going to start doing now is putting that in fine print and then saying, if other documentation, documentation isn't, isn't wished to be found through some cumbersome process, please fill in the blank on what your child's biological sex is and sign below. And they'll start getting 99% of their biological sex reports like through that form instead of, instead of actually getting a birth certificate. And the state legislature has allowed it. Exception, exception to a policy for a student with gender dysphoria. And here you go. Here's the main thing that they're sitting there, they're screaming out that they're following the law and, and like, you know, to the extent where they're not considered being negligible. But here's, this is the big, this is the whole, this is the big thing right here. The American Psychiatric Association describes gender dysphoria as a condition characterized by psychological distress that results from an incongruence between one's sex assigned at birth and one's gender identity. In order to meet the criteria for a diagnosis of gender dysphoria, under the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders, the condition must be associated with clinically significant distress or impairment on social, occupational and other important areas of functioning. Research shows that 73% of transgender men and 78% of transgender women experience gender dysphoria by, by age seven. That's, I'm calling bullshit on that. A diagnosis of gender dysphoria may support a finding that a student has a disability and is eligible for either a 504 plan under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 73, or an individual education program, an IP under the, the IDEA. The Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals has held that gender dysphoria can be a physical or mental impairment for purposes of the Americans with Disability Act, ADA and Section 504. The ADA excludes gender identity disorders not resulting from physical impairments. However, in Williams, the Fourth Circuit found that gender dysphoria is not a gender identity disorder. This holding and the new definition contained in the DSM-5 allows the recognition of gender dysphoria as a disability. That can entitle a student with gender dysphoria to certain accommodations on a 504 plan or IP as determined by Section 504 Committee or IDEA admissions, yada, yada. Such accommodations, listen now, such combinations may include permitting access and use of a certain restroom for a student. So they have two outs now. First out is, okay, don't give us the inborn certificate. Just write in here that your little boy's, say, say he's female and sign it. Yeah, we know you're lying, but there's, it's not, nobody can do anything about it. Cause there's no ramp, there's no repercussions. So there's that, number one. Number two is hey, we just need you to go get a gender dysphoria diagnosis. Okay. Or what does send you to our school counselor? Cause you signed off saying that he can go, that's all we gotta do is get a signature from you. What does have them diagnose them with gender dysphoria? Cause they don't have to be getting drugs or anything for it. They just have to have a diagnosis of gender dysphoria. So as long as it's a medical, medical doctor or a shrink, whatever, saying that, then guess what? Under both those provisions, what JCPS is saying is little boys that's saying they're girls can use a bathroom with girls. The board believes that Senate Bill 150, which targets transgender students simply because their non-conforming gender identity is discriminatory, may create barriers to access to equal educational opportunity, may limit the rights of parents, and may endanger the, the health, safety, and lives of hundreds of children in school. Like I said, what about endangering 56,000? Certain provisions of Senate Bill 150 may create a mechanism for systemic, systematic, and repeated trauma of children through a misguided bathroom policy, which may, which may cause increased levels of anxiety, depression, and potential self-harm of transgender children. So listen, everything we've read so far, all of it has been centered around bathrooms. While your kids is about to get on a bus and get shipped to God knows where, on a bus with God knows who, for God knows how long, they have spent the first 10 pages, 11 pages of this document talking about like wanting to let little boys that say they're little girls use the damn bathroom with little girls. If that doesn't piss y'all off, then hey, we're just, wait, we're just, we just different people. We're just different. The board looks forward to clarification from the courts that will hopefully ensure educational opportunity, equal application for all students. Until that time, the board will reluctantly implement Senate Bill 150 via the following policy. Okay, so as set forth, Board Policy 3.17, Discipline on Renewal Resignation by Employee That's Certified. So these are certified teachers. Certified employee, employee shall comply with Professional Code of Ethics for Kentucky School Certified Personnel, which are, which requires that. They shall strive to uphold the responsibilities of the education profession, including the following obligations to students. Shall provide students with professional education services in a nondiscriminatory manner and in consonance with accepted best practice known to the educator. I hate the word best practice. I hate it. Shall take reasonable measures to protect the health, safety, and emotional well-being of students directly related to you have an obligation to not tell parents shit if you think it's, they're, they're gonna get in any kind of blowback. Certified employee ethical obligations to students continued. Shall keep in confidence information about students which has been obtained in the course of professional service unless disclosure serves professional purposes or is required by law. They're being specific and saying, listen, if you don't know for sure, you have to tell the parents this. We expect you not to. If you, but if you do, we are going to punish you to the full extent that we, that we can. Then you shall refrain from subjecting students to embarrassment or disparagement. So again, all kids gotta say is like, if you tell me, if you tell that, I'm gonna be embarrassed. If you tell it, you just subjected them to embarrassment. I mean, it's as simple as that. An employee who violates provisions of the Professional Code of Ethics for Kentucky School Certified Personnel may sub, may be subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination. Nobody is using teachers as political footballs except for this godforsaken Jefferson County Public School Board. They're awful people. Violation, yada, yada, of Kentucky schools or of a personnel may result in cause to initiate proceedings for revocation or suspension of Kentucky certification by the Educational Professional Standards Board. Now, please mind you. These, these standards set forth by this Educational Professional Standards Board is not an elected body. May, yes, it may have been created by the Kentucky State Legislature, but they're not elected. This is the equivalent of the FBI, the CIA, the Department of Education, the Office of Civil Rights, the, like, the EPA. It's, it's the equivalent of that on a state level. So by creating them, what has happened over the years is the left has infiltrated them now. And we just let them do it to where now that like, it's, it's, it's accepted that since the, the state law, the state legislature said you had to, that it's okay that this thing exists and you have to follow whatever they say, now whatever they say effectively becomes, becomes a law. So this KRS 161120 establishes the duty of the superintendent to report to the ESPB misconduct by certified employee that might, might reasonably be expected, might reasonably. Am I the only person that sees the ridiculousness in that? So like, basically, basically if anything happens, they're expected to warrant consideration for action against the employee's educator certificate. This includes violation of the Professional Code of Ethics. So certified employee does something that might reasonably be expected to warrant consideration. I mean, that is craziness. I mean, they're literally putting you on the chopping block. The intentional, repeated, and ongoing misgendering or harassment of a student, including without limitation to the use of non-preferred pronouns of the student, may constitute a violation of the Professional Code of Ethics for Kentucky Certified Personnel and Board Policy 03.17, and may subject the employee to proceedings to revoke or suspend certification and disciplinary action by the district. If I'm a teacher, I'm flipping them with a bird and saying, F you. If it's never been clearer that they know what they're asking you to do is unethical, this should make it, this should make it perfectly clear. Because why, why this, these kind of threats, or why are these kind of threats being levied to teachers? Disrupting the educational process by employee behavior that disrupts the educational process includes conduct that interferes with a student's access to educational opportunities or programs, including ability to attend, participate in, and benefit from instructional and extracurricular activities. Uh, hey, Ron Dotson, Bill Wesley, Robbie Mills, Steve West. They're specifically saying that your exclusion of transgender boys from, and play girls' sports is conduct that interferes with a student's educational opportunities. So again, they're gonna come back and say they're the ones that are putting, that are putting these teachers at risk. Because it's like, no, they make the law. So they're supposed to, what they put in law actually should specifically keep them, keep a teacher or, or an administrator from being subjected to this because they're saying that it's ill, that it's, that, that little boys can't use, can't play their girls' sports. So I mean, it's just totally, totally ridiculous. Let's see what the next, uh, thing here is about done. The definition of sexual harassment under Title IX includes the intentional, repeated, and ongoing misgendering harassment of a student, including without limitation to the use of non-preferred pronouns of the student as defined in Title IX, and may subject the teacher to formal grievance proceedings under federal law and set forth in Board Policy 09.42811, and may result in disciplinary action by the district. If you're a teacher and you know that the kid's a boy and he says, you gotta, you gotta call me a girl or a zay, and you call them by their name or the pronoun they said they didn't wanna be called by, the Jefferson County School Board is saying they consider you a sexual predator. That you are guilty of sexual harassment. I didn't say that. They, they're saying that. The state legislature didn't say that. They're saying that. Don't, don't lose sight of who, of who, of who's doing this shit to you. I think that's the last thing I had. Let's see. Oh, no, I got a couple. Yeah, I don't wanna talk about that. So the last thing, access to information regarding the biological sex of a student. The biological sex of a student is required under state law to be entered into the student data system based on the student's birth certificate or if no birth certificate is provided, based on information provided by the parent, guardian to the, to the school or district. Such information may only be accessed by an employee who has a legitimate educational interest to comply with state or federal law and who has been trained and given registrar rights to access information in the student data system. So if you're a teacher and you wanna, you're, you're trying to find out if you are violating the law or violating their professional code of ethics, they're saying in order to not just go on the kid's word or the parent's word, you have to, says it may only be accessed by an employee who has a legitimate educational interest. Okay? And who has been trained and given registrar rights. So they, they actually hold the key because you have to have both of those things that are qualifiers. So if you don't hold the key and they haven't give, put you through that training, no matter what, you cannot access the information. Beyond requesting a birth certificate of a student from a parent guardian as permitted under law, district and school officials and staff are prohibited from asking a student or parent guardian for information regarding or requiring proof of a student's biological sex based on a student's chromosomes or anatomy. They are saying, we're not violating the law as a board, but we're making it to where our administrators and our teachers legitimately can't, cannot abide by the law. And that's the, that's the last thing I wanna touch on with that. So just to recap here. Not only did they, did Jefferson County School Board put your children at risk for some kids on buses for five plus hours on, on what day was that? Wednesday? I mean, imminent harm, car accidents, pedestrian, being hit as a pedestrian, exposure to traffic hazards, roads they're unfamiliar with, people on routes that the parents didn't think to search to make sure they weren't going by certain houses. Okay, so abduction, child abuse, sexual abuse, physical abuse, mental and emotional abuse on buses because they're, they got little kids pissing themselves. Okay, we, just a few years ago, there was people giving oral sex on buses on, on JCPS. And then, and it was like, this is documented. They had second graders on buses with high schoolers. Who knows what they saw on those buses? Who knows? Fathers, I want you to think about that. How would you feel? How do you feel knowing that your, your little girl may have been exposed to seeing some kind of sexual act taking place on this bus with these hot, with high schoolers? And your daughter won't, wouldn't even know to bring it up to you? The traumatic event just happened. She just thinks it's normal. She's freaking out. She doesn't even wanna bring it up to you. I mean, I want you to picture that for a second. So as opposed to protecting your seven-year-old or nine, or 10, or 11, or 12-year-old from those, those things. The Jefferson County School Board has spent at least an entire month doing nothing other than trying to make sure every loophole possible was investigated and put into writing to allow a little boy that thinks she's like a little girl to use the restroom with your actual little girl. It's just the truth. These people are, I mean, I'm not God, so I don't, I'm not here to judge anybody. You know what I mean? But like, I don't want my children associated with these people. I don't ever want them in the same room as them. Now it's time for you to make that decision. And if you wanna, if you want to look into other options, homeschooling, private schooling, co-ops, charter schools, cottage schools, whatever. Reach out to somebody. Email me at jrmc@waytomeuchamedy.com. We homeschool. We have other resources that, that, that points you in the right direction. You can tweet, tweet at me or whatever on Twitter, at way too much RMC. I'm on, I'm on Facebook, under the name John Ross here in, uh, here in Louisville. But we're out here and we wanna give you the information and we want, we wanna show you another path. And you, the valuation of this, of this school board is up, is, you know, it's up to you. All I can do is give you the information. So appreciate y'all listening. I hope y'all have a great, great rest of your day. Thanks.